All right, Scott, you got everything?
Yes, sir, we are good to go.
All right, thank you very much. We'll officially call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our December 8th, 2020 Burlington City Council meeting. Due to the continuing coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform. This meeting is also being livestreamed on the City of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. For tonight's public comments or to address the city council at this meeting during the appropriate time, please indicate that you wish to do so using the raise hand feature in Zoom, or star nine if you're joining us by mobile phone, and that will notify our host that you wish to speak. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Balchutus, and I'd like to confirm that all members of the persons on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes. Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant city manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant city manager Rachel Kelly.
Yeah.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Yeah.
And HR Strategic Initiatives Manager Greg Grayson.
Here.
Very good, thank you, everyone. For tonight's invocation, we call on councilmember Jim Butler.
Let's pray. Fathers, we gather tonight to conduct the business of our city. Lord, we ask that you provide us your continued blessing and guidance. Father, we find our community, our country, with many challenges, but through you, all things are possible, as you are the great Redeemer and healer. As we continue to experience the ravages of COVID-19, please lead, guide, and direct those leading the charge for caregiving. Protect them and give them comfort for those sick and struggling. Heal them, Lord, and for those with lost loved ones, help them find solace and peace. This is typically the time of year for Thanksgiving, and this is the time for families to come together and enjoy one another's company, but this year's different. The experiences will be different, the mood's different, the atmosphere's different, but Lord, what's not different is your saving grace, your love and your mercy. That's our Thanksgiving. That's our hope for better days ahead. God, we ask that you bless this council, provide us with the knowledge to make good decisions, decisions in the best interests of everyone. While our politics may be personal, may our approach be universal, and may our impact be equitable and rewarding. Thank you, Lord, for the many blessings for those that we often take for granted. Help us to continue to grow and thrive as a society based on the principles of love and cooperation. Most of all, thank you for your salvation. Through you, all things are possible, and nothing insurmountable. In your name we pray. Amen.
If I could, counsel, our community lost an amazing healthcare leader, and as tonight we're talking about COVID-19 as part of our meeting, I'd just like to recognize that our community lost Tracy Salisbury this week. For those of you who may not know, her work was incredible for the open door clinic here in Burlington. I know many members around our community have been wearing purple in remembrance, and I've decided to join them as well, but Tracy will be much missed. At this time, I'd like to recognize our interim city clerk for our code of ethics.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Before council our minutes from November 2nd, 2020, City Council Work Session, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Go both.
Second.
Motion to approve from councilmember Ward, seconded by councilmember Butler. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Indicate with a hand raise as well. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is our additions to the agenda. We have three additions this evening. First is consent agenda item G, public art donations. Next is new business item three, adopt a resolution for COVID-19 public safety measures, and new business item four, budget amendment 2021-18. Do I hear a motion to approve those additions?
Move to approve the additions.
Second.
Motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve these additions? All those in favor, please indicate with hand raised and aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions?
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the additions as requested.
Second.
Motion to adopt the agenda with additions made by councilmember Butler, seconded by councilmember Ward. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to adopt an ordinance to approve the following traffic commission recommendations, to request to install stop signs at unsignalized intersections currently operating under two-way stop conditions with no stop sign in the field. The details of those are spelled out in your agenda. Item B, to approve a proposed regular meeting schedule for the 2020-21 work session and city council meetings, and item C, to approve the 2020 North Carolina Firefighters Association annual roster certification pursuant to NCGS 58-86-25. Item D, to approve budget amendment 2021-15 for grant funds awarded to the Kernodal Senior Center from the Piedmont Triad Regional Council to be used for exercise equipment, outdoor program equipment, water fountain outfit, and technology equipment for the senior center. Item E, to approve budget amendment 2021-16 to allocate rehab loan program income funds for use in the CDBG professional services. Item F, to approve budget amendment 2021-17 received from Alamance County to allocate towards eligible Burlington communications 911 expenditures. Item G, to accept the following public art donations, donation of a carousel horse from Dr. Charles Kleberg, and donation of a bronze sculpture of two children and a dog to be placed at Burlington Arboretum at Willowbrook Park contingent upon adherence to section six of the City of Burlington's PAMH policy. Do I hear a motion from council to approve the foregoing consent agenda items?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items made by councilmember Butler, seconded by councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion has passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next, we have our new business items. Item one, city council will consider authorizing the approval of an interlocal agreement between the City of Burlington and Guilford County to provide emergency management services for a three-year term. This time, I'd like to recognize HR Strategic Initiatives Manager, Greg Grayson. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you here this evening. I will touch on a few of the points about this program, and we'll share a PowerPoint with you. I'm gonna go ahead and pull that over now, and make sure that you have a good visual of that.
So we've got that up?
So we will go ahead and move to it. Can you see that well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So what we would like to speak to you tonight is about a regional approach to emergency management. We've been working in that endeavor in the past six months in an interim basis. That program has worked well, and we'd like to share a few observations of that and a recommendation on how to best move forward for the City of Burlington. The emergency management system, especially in this pandemic situation, has been highlighted of the need of value within each and every community. In North Carolina, the program is very much a federal to state to county and municipal system. So as we work through that system, each level of government has an important role to play in the overall emergency management system. Since the City of Burlington is in two counties, both Alamance and Guilford, we connect with both of those counties, and that's a part of what we will share with you here today. The whole emergency management concept and program is really very much about coordination and helping entities work together and achieve things together that are needed in emergency measures and incidents occur, whether they be natural disasters, whether they be something related to the pandemic, and many other cases that come up on a day-to-day basis. It's really based around preparing, responding, recovering, and mitigating what can we do to help prevent this from happening again. And so the important focus of this photo is really just that it's a cycle, and it's always ongoing. You're looking at incidents before, during, and after emergencies, and always in a spirit of continuous improvement. The City of Burlington's emergency management model has historically been part of the police department for many years. About six months ago, a position there became vacant, and it gave an opportunity for the city to do some reengineering and reevaluating of the overall program. We did an outreach to both Alamance and Guilford County and asked for their interest in creating a partnership. Granted, this has been a very difficult time, given the many strains with the pandemic that all agencies have been facing, but Alamance had some staffing challenges at the time and continued to help us as needed, but Guilford County said we have some capacity to assist the City of Burlington, and so we have been working with Guilford County in an interim capacity here for approximately the last six months. During this interim period, we have very much had a regional approach to emergency management, and I'll say that we've had excellent cooperation and support during this interim period from both the Burlington Police Department, Burlington Fire, and all of the city departments, but we have met regularly. Every two weeks, our fire, police, HR team has been together and looking at every incident that has occurred. What has gone well? How can we improve? And staying very focused on that. In this interim period, we've been able to stay within our budget appropriation for this program, and Guilford has been very responsive to this. They have an excellent staff and team, and they have a lot of resources to work with. It's important to know that Guilford is the only accredited emergency management program in North Carolina currently, and so that just basically means they have a lot of standards that they meet in the planning, preparedness, credentials of staff, and all of those areas. And so the arrangement with them in the interim period has gone very, very well. Looking forward, our entire team has been looking at all of the available options and alternatives, and we've had a number of city staff members involved in that effort. We have looked at obviously performance measures, fiscal measures, and service. What is the best level of service for overall citizens? We're bringing forward tonight a recommendation to continue with Guilford County for an approximate three-year period of time for an agreement, and one of the strongest attributes of that is getting a person focused here and assigned in Burlington to work with our staff much more closely. We've been in a somewhat of a remote environment with Guilford, and the one missing piece has been having someone physically here each day to work with city staff, and in order to do that, it needs to be a longer-term commitment for Guilford to add a staff member to be able to do that. What we bring before you tonight is also remaining within the appropriated budget for FY 2021, and our recommendations to enable the manager to execute an interlocal agreement with Guilford County to provide these emergency management services over the next few years. This agreement's going to provide quite a few enhancements. That full-time person assigned to Burlington, not just on an on-call basis, not just by telephone and Zoom, but be able to interact more and more with city staff and providing that daily presence on site. We will retain all of the resources that Guilford has in that arrangement, such that if this person's away in vacation or training, then the Guilford staff is continuing to assist City of Burlington and backfill as those needs might become necessary. We're proposing that the emergency management program be housed in HR and human resources, and it will parallel the city's safety program. There's a lot of connectivity between the safety program and the emergency management program. We think there's a lot of synergy with that. The issues that have come up, especially you know, it's really highlighted that in the last nine months in the COVID situation, how much our city's safety person's involved in the emergency management, how much emergency management's involved in safety. So we propose to house those within the HR department and parallel the city's safety program, but work with all departments, not just fire, not just police, not just water resources or public works, but all departments. As you may know, there's a number of regulatory requirements that affect each of those departments, such as listed, and this person would be able to work in all of those areas and really have a really good foundation and footing directly in Burlington to be able to do that. So our recommendation that we bring to you here tonight is again to authorize the city staff to execute that interlocal agreement with Guilford County to provide those emergency management services long-term for an approximate three-year period for the city. And with that, I'll certainly be glad to take any questions that you may have. As you think of all those components that are part of the emergency management system, we're seeing many of those in operation and in play today, and they're very much an important need for the citizens of Burlington.
Very good. Thank you, Greg. Any questions from council? Covered it all. So it sounds like a good relationship, and we appreciate the thought that you and fellow staff members have put into this.
Thank you.
I think it's been said before, you can't plan this in the middle of a disaster, so it's good to have those plans and relationships built ahead of time. Councilmember Owen, did you have a?
Well, I'd just like to make a motion. I think this is a sign of what's occurring across the state where local governments are working together to be more efficient, and frankly, it's a great example that should go in other communities, and I want to compliment Greg, obviously, for his leadership in furthering this concept.
And you said you wished a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, yes. I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Burlington and Guilford County.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that and give my thanks to Greg Grayson as well for doing an outstanding job. Thanks, Greg.
Very good. All right, motion has been seconded. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All right, motion made by councilmember Owen, seconded by councilmember Ward. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and there's Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you very much, Greg. But that will move to item two on our agenda. City council will consider approving proposed 2021 fees and charges scheduled to be effective January 1st, 2021. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Director of Finance and Risk Management, Peggy Reese.
Thank council for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. You have been given an updated proposed fee schedule. As a reminder, at council's request, we have removed all of the recreation changes. So before you tonight, to be approved are the engineering and inspection changes. Fire, we included just because this is the schedule that they need to be included on, but you've already approved them back with the fiscal year 2021 budget. I believe Todd, Nolan are around as well as myself to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Peggy. Any questions from council regarding this item? Do I hear a motion from council?
Make a motion that we approve the proposed 2021 fees and changes and charges schedules effective January 1st, 2021.
I hear a second.
Second.
Motion to approve from councilmember Butler, seconded by councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve on the fees and charges schedule? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you very much, Peggy. With that, we'll move to item three of our new business. City council will consider adopting a resolution appealing to and encouraging residents to adhere to COVID-19 public safety measures. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll do a quick introductory, some introductory comments, and Ms. Reese may join and walk you through the detailed list. Just wanted to recapture what we, what city council discussed last night at the work session. Staff has compiled the information that's in a budget amendment which was provided to you via email late this afternoon, and again, Ms. Reese will go through that in a moment, but the changes since we discussed this, I mean, the changes coming from our discussion last night are as follows. We have included a, for all full-time city employees earning $24 or less per hour, or less than $50,000 annually, will receive a one-time payment of $500 from the city via payroll check before year-end. Also, all part-time employees, and that includes folks that are classified as regularly and currently working each week year-round, earning $24 or less per hour, will also receive a one-time payment of $300 from the city via payroll before year-end. And so those are the two changes that are different from yesterday, and I'll yield to Ms. Reese, and she may walk you through, maybe share her screen with the detailed list.
Very good. Thank you, manager.
Can you see the screen now?
Yeah.
So pretty much with the increases of, our adding the $500 and the $300 for the full-time and part-time respectively, we increased our sales tax a little bit and made changes to each of these division numbers as well. So we increased our expenditures here. The decreases in the expenditures are from the CARES money that we're moving, CARES expenses. This represents the CARES Family First Act COVID pay for individuals who are either exposed or actually had COVID-19, and the family's first act covered those pay, and we're allowed to move those to the CARES fund. So that's why we're decreasing the budget there. The same thing occurred for the Water and Sewer Fund. We used a little bit of appropriated fund balance, and we have decreased expenditures that correspond to what I was just talking about. And then we have, the Stormwater Fund is the same. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Peggy. Any questions from council regarding these changes? All right.
We would like to have a motion to approve this if it so pleases the council.
I'm gonna see if I can be heard. Do you hear me?
And I, actually, so let me clarify. So item three of new business is the resolution, which is what we're on, but the changes, did we skip ahead to item four?
Yeah.
I think we dropped one. We can go back to it.
I think we skipped to item four, but anyway.
Sorry about that, mayor. I got a little excited and jumped to number four. I apologize.
We should be excited. This is a great opportunity to reward our, and recognize our employees who have put in tremendous work this year in serving our community, and as I've seen, I know many of our residents have seen, they have not missed a beat. When this pandemic hit, our employees continue to be present in the community, providing the services that our residents expect. And so, all right, so with that recognized, we are currently receiving the presentation for item four of new business. City council will consider approving budget amendment 2021-18 CARES Act, employee pay increases, and other purposes. Any council questions regarding what's presented regarding this, or do I hear a motion?
I'm moved that we approved the budget amendment 2021-18.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by councilmember Ward. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, staff. Big thank you again to all of our employees. With that, we will move back to item three, which is city council will consider adopting a resolution appealing to and encouraging residents to adhere to the COVID-19 public safety measures. At this time, we'll again recognize city manager Harden Watkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers, thank you for your support on behalf of our city employees and our partner agencies that are represented in those changes. We greatly appreciate your support, and I apologize for jumping forward. The next item is in response to some requests from city council members. This resolution that has been provided to city council expresses and reaffirms a commitment of the Burlington City Council to supporting health, public health measures to help slow the spread of COVID, and implores our residents and business owners to take personal responsibility in doing their part to protect themselves, to protect their families and neighbors by observing the myriad of public health recommendations that are out there. I want to thank Rachel Kelly, David Huffman, and Lieutenant Alan Maylaw from the Police Department for working on this resolution in the last few days. In response to the dramatic COVID, the rise of COVID cases that we're seeing in our community and around the state and around the country, council had asked us to take a look at a resolution that strongly supports compliance with executive orders that have been issued to protect the public health. If council does take action on this resolution tonight, our community engagement staff will get working immediately and diligently promote the message through all our communication channels. So thinking, I want to thank in advance Morgan Lassiter and John Vernon from our public information team, who were poised to, as I said, begin sharing this immediately. Mayor, depending on the council's wishes, I'll be happy to read, read the entire resolution. You may be interested in reading the entire resolution, or one of us could either just read the 10 points of action in the last page of the resolution, so.
I think it would be my preference, and in the spirit of our discussion yesterday, to read the resolution to make sure that this message does get out in every form and fashion into the community. We could split it up if you want to take the witnesses, and then I'll take the 10 points.
Okay. So this is a resolution of the Burlington City Council, appealing to and encouraging its residents to build?
We lost you.
I'm struggling on the word here. Vigilantly adhere to the COVID-19 public safety measures set out in the governor's executive orders. Whereas Governor Cooper, due to the increase in laboratory confirmed positive COVID-19 cases statewide, has requested cities to help with enforcement of the governor's executive orders. Whereas through the issuance of Executive Order 180 on November 23rd, 2020, the governor has requested cities in the state's orange and red severity categories of its new COVID-19 county alert system to undertake a number of actions, including but not limited to enhanced encouragement for observation of mask requirements and capacity and mask gathering limits. Whereas laboratory confirmed positive COVID-19 cases in Alamance County have risen to over 8,400, and sadly, over 120 Alamance County residents have passed away as a result of the virus. Whereas, community spread of COVID-19 is rising exponentially, with the risk of contracting the virus in the community having doubled in the past month, and is expected to double yet again in the coming months. Whereas, the CDC has projected that December, January, and February will be some of the most difficult times in the history of public health in the nation due to the stress placed on our healthcare systems. Whereas, Cone Health has implemented operational changes to create more available beds for the COVID-19 patients, expected to be admitted to area hospitals in the coming weeks and months. Whereas, the distribution of a vaccine to combat the COVID-19 virus for the general population is still months away. Whereas, health authorities, including the CDC, the Surgeon General of the United States, and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, have recommended the use of face coverings as a means of preventing the spread of COVID-19. Whereas, on November 23rd, 2020, Governor Cooper issued Executive Order 180 in an effort to help curtail the spread of COVID-19 by expanding the requirements for use of face coverings by persons in North Carolina. Whereas, on December 5th, 2020, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services reported the highest one-day total of new cases of COVID-19, when 6,018 new residents of North Carolina tested positive. Whereas, citizens and residents around the nation and state are experiencing COVID-19 fatigue resulting from having endured personal sacrifice commencing with the March 2020 onset of the virus. And whereas, it is Burlington City Council's intent to bring awareness and emphasize the importance of those public health measures laid out in the governor's executive orders, including but not limited to the face covering or mask requirements, and the emergency maximum capacity limits, and encourage its citizens to recommit to these public safety measures at this most critical time.
Thank you, Andrew. Now, therefore, be it resolved that in the face of the expected significant increases of COVID-19 cases in the next three months, Now therefore be it resolved that in the face of the expected significant increases of COVID-19 cases in the next three months, the residents of Burlington accept personal responsibility to observe the following. Number one, maintain physical, social distances of at least six feet. Wear face coverings in all indoor settings where other individuals may be present, regardless of one's perceived ability to maintain physical distance of at least six feet. Number three, wear face coverings outdoors when it is not possible to consistently be physically distant by at least six feet from non-household members. Item four, observe the mask gathering limit as revised in Executive Order Number 176 of 10 people indoors and 50 people outdoors. Remain vigilant. Item five, remain vigilant in the wearing of face coverings and adhering to the mask gathering limits with any non-household members, even if the non-household members are family or close friends. Item six, wash your hands as often as possible and utilize hand sanitizer as necessary. Item seven, encourage your family, friends, colleagues, and social networks to remain vigilant in their compliance with public health recommendations. Item eight, remain ever mindful of the devastating and potentially deadly consequences of failing to observe public health guidance, including your family, friends, and neighbors. Be it further resolved that businesses, business proprietors and managers accept the responsibility to vigilit- vigilantly protect their staff and customers by observing the following. Item nine, ensure all employees, guests, and patrons wear face coverings at all times while in a business's premises and restrict entry to those guests and patrons who wear face coverings unless an exception to this requirement applies. Item 10, observe all additional restrictions applicable to your place of business as issued via executive order, including capacity limitations, physical distancing procedures, and provision of hand sanitizer. The city of Burlington, the Burlington City Council hereby resolves its commitment to slow the spread of COVID-19 and protect lives in the city of Burlington and appeals to the Burlington community to come together to combat the virus by vigilantly adhering to the public health measures set, put on the governor's executive orders. Council, any questions regarding the motion? Or the resolution? Any discussion? Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to adopt the resolution made by councilmember Harold Owen, seconded by councilmember Jim Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? With that, do I hear? Uh all those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you to staff for putting this together, and uh now it's up to us and our community, to all of our residents to take this to heart and to action to help ensure the safety of our community as we move forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I just could mention, I I also want to thank uh and I I think a a large majority of our businesses who have, I believe, worked in this, in the spirit of this uh resolution all along. Uh they've been very unique in terms of having to make changes in their operations to remain uh functional and financially uh in a manner to operate. And I uh I think it's uh it's it's amazing to watch our small businesses especially make these changes and still provide services uh and 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 create a business opportunity and also opportunity for residents who needs those services or those products. So I'm again, I'm I'm very thankful to our our business community for their efforts.
And I know it has not been easy for many of them, but it's critical for the long-term viability of our community. Council, any other comments on this resolution? As with that, our staff will uh take and distribute this in any and all means available to help get this message uh out to our community. With that, that concludes our regular agenda items. Next is our public comment period. Public comments were uh could be emailed to us at publiccomments@berlingtonnc.gov, and those were accepted up until 5:00 PM uh today. Comments can also be made right now during the Zoom meeting by using the raise hand feature or star nine. Uh and at this time, if anyone would like to make a public comment, you can do so. If anyone is experiencing any technical difficulties, you can contact our public information specialist, John Vernon, at 336-513-5440. Take just a moment. Clerk Smith, did we have any uh emailed comments?
There were no email comments received.
Looks like there have been no indications for public comment. Again, just a reminder, if you wish to make a general public comment at this time in the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us by phone. All right. Looks like uh no further request for public comments. But that will move to city council comments. Council members, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make one. Uh today, I I had the opportunity during the week to participate in a virtual the uh State Recreation and Parks Conference as an exhibitor, but uh it it was really unique in terms of the format that was put place virtually, how we could participate and be part of it. And one of the the key parts of that uh conference, we started off with the mayor and a number of residents in North Carolina speaking about what parks and recreation has meant uh to them and their community. Our uh our chairman of Parks and Recreation Commission, Chris Honeycutt, was one who spoke. But the one person, all this conversation, they got the most credit and mentioned the most, was our own Jane Smith. And it was mentioned, and Jim Butler, this is, but you make sure you hear, is that you know, those two young men, the Torrey Holt and Terrence Holt grew up in Gibsonville. Uh and they both spoke. Uh both of those obviously had really substantial athletic careers. Torres in the football, the College Football Hall of Fame is is actually on the ballot for the NFL Hall of Fame, and Terrence had a career in NFL, but both have gone on with a number of 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 different business ventures and including whole construction now, which is very successful. But they spoke about kids and with limited income and having an opportunity to participate and what it meant to them in terms of in their education. And they consistently referred to Jane Smith. And and as Jim, remember, both those young men went on to Eastern Guilford High School, uh graduated, and is doing very well now. So uh it was really cool to hear uh people of that nature speak and um and how much credit they gave to Jane for everything she's done. And of course, she's continued that when we recruited her to Burlington to work with the seniors. She she's certainly a gem, and um we we I'm very proud to say we, she's part of our team.
Very good. Thank you, councilmember. Other council comments? I do want to remind folks of a couple upcoming events. I've had many questions from folks about the Burlington Christmas Parade, which obviously did not happen this year. Uh but our staff has been diligently working on a modified event where folks can still see Santa. And so mark your calendars, December 12th, this uh coming weekend is the B-Town Christmas Cruise Through over near City Park uh from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. This is in the same spirit as some of our other holiday cruise-through type events, which have been well-supported and well-received and appreciated by the community. Uh so this is a great opportunity for you to see uh Santa and Mrs. Claus as well as participate in some other safe socially-distanced activities in this cruise-through style event. Also, for folks looking to get out and be active in a festive manner, the downtown reindeer hunt is on until December 20th. Uh we have numerous merchants and businesses around downtown for you to go find reindeer hiding in the windows. Uh and then, uh lastly, yesterday, we had a vigil, it's an annual vigil recognizing Burlington's only police officer ever lost uh whose life is lost in service, and that was Sonny Vaughn. Uh and also mentioned that Sheriff Deputy Robertson was uh killed in that altercation. But it it made me think about the frontline responders who have been uh working day in and day out during this pandemic uh since the very early part of the year, and how much we owe to them. Uh some of them have given their lives in fighting this pandemic, others who have given so much time, been away from their family. I know they're tired. I know they're stressed. Uh and as this pandemic continues to escalate, our community needs them more than ever. And so tonight, our council adopted the resolution regarding COVID-19 and recommendations to our community to help slow the spread. Uh and I ask uh that folks take that truly to heart, because those frontline responders are exhausted. We're all fatigued by this. Uh but we each can take actions in our daily lives that make their service a little bit easier and help our community pull through this. So in the spirit of all those past and present who've given their service of their lives to our community, we all have a responsibility right now to help our community pull through this. Other council comments?
Mayor, I have one comment if councilmembers are complete. Um just as I have a heads-up item uh related to the CDBG CV Water Bill Utility Assistance Program. Just wanted to let council know that our CDBG staff team has learned that the city is allowed to offer six months of payments instead of three months uh for folks that need that help. That's $100 per month for eligible recipients. Uh we've learned that HUD regulations allow six months, and staff would like to begin offering this to all eligible households. Uh and without any council objections, we would start doing that beginning immediately to try to help some folks before the holidays. Uh we believe it's in keeping with councils' expressed desire to get these funds out there and fully utilize in the community can be a big help to those with COVID-related financial challenges. All the previous regulations about being eligible for CDBGs still apply, and staff can obviously let folks know what those restrictions are. It is first come, first served. And we're hopeful, as I said, people will take advantage before the holidays and help out. So um without any objections, um again, nothing's required by HUD, any other approved formal approvals. And Finance Department feels like we're okay to go ahead and do this. So without any council objections, we'll start offering six months of payments uh beginning tomorrow instead of three months.
Do they contact Harden if interested in this?
They start off with the uh U- Utility Billing Office. If they'll just uh reach out to the um
Do you have that number?
Hand me. Peggy, you may have that. Peggy, if you can jump back on.
It's 336-222.
Hold on a second.
And Harden, while we're waiting on that, do you do, would you like a motion on this or just a?
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion. Just one, just but just to see if anybody had any objections or had any concerns.
5100.
5100?
Uh huh.
Very good. So council, any objections to uh this modification?
The pool's standing ahead.
Yeah.
Delaying.
Yeah, I appreciate, manager, you uh bringing that to our attention. Think water is absolutely critical to our residents, and I think we can all agree that if somebody's fallen behind uh dur- during this pandemic, they are definitely not catching up right now. And so any assistance that we can provide, any flexibility that our staff can work with those folks on is critical and fundamental. So to anyone out there listening, watching this uh or with loved ones who are are struggling with paying a water bill right now, please contact that number. Please contact our staff. Uh they have a a number of tools that they have access to to help you in this time of need uh in this time of difficulty, and they would love to to connect you to those, but they can't until you begin that conversation with them. So 336-222-5100. It's a great place to start. Council, any other comments this evening?
Let's hope everybody has a good, wonderful Christmas, and uh I know we'll talk as we need to, but we'll see you next year.
Thank you, councilmember. All right. Happy holidays, everyone. With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening and a happy holidays.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks.
Take care.